Good evening. A call to order the meeting of the Board of Trustees being held tonight at June 12, 2014, beginning at 6:00 PM. I will do roll call to establish a forum. Ms. Ayder.
President.
Mr. Flores.
Hello.
Ms. Williams.
President.
And Mr. Salinas, I'm here. Dr. Mackey.
Yes, sir.
Okay, we're going to be going to close session pursuant to Texas Government Code Section 551.071 Attorney Consultation Regarding Legal Issues Related to an Employee Complaint. And C pursuant to Texas Government Code 55.074 to hear, consider, and deliberate employee complaint. We are now going to close session at 6:04. Back on the record at 8:09. We have returned from closed session. The time is 8:09. Do I have a motion regarding the grievance?
Yes, sir, Mr. President.
Yes.
I move that we send the employee grievance back to Level 2 for review and further determination by the Superintendent.
Second by Ms. Ayder, second by Ms. Williams. Okay? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed likewise. Motion carries. Thank you very much. We go back through the board. We're going to go back... To consideration of discussion items and reports. Board, if you can go to item six.
Mr. President.
Yes.
If you could, for the record, make a statement in open session regarding the other grievance.
Oh, okay. Pursuant to Texas Government Codes 551.074 and 551.0821, hear, consider, and deliberate parent complaint against board member. And for the record, the parent canceled this hearing until further notice.
She requested a reschedule.
She requested a reschedule, I'm sorry. Until sometime in July. Okay. Can we go to seven, consideration of discussion and action items? A, consider and take possible action regarding approval of a settlement agreement with the San Antonio Water Systems. Dr. Mackey.
Motion.
Motion by Ms. Ayder, second by Ms. Williams. Dr. Mackey.
Yes, sir. You may remember that we signed an MOU with SAWs. Part of the MOU had a lot of these same statements in there, but they also made a deal with us that if we signed that MOU with them, they would cancel the contested case hearing with TCEQ in Austin. So they're kind of crossing their i's and dotting their t's with this, and they said, "You need to have this approved by the board, and once you get this approved, then we'll cancel the contested case hearing with TCEQ on the Evans Road property." So that's why we brought this to you, this specific document, so that they'll cancel that contested case hearing with TCEQ.
All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed likewise. Okay, consideration of discussion items and reports. Item A, fiscal year 20... Oh, consideration of consent items. Consider and take action regarding approval of construction procurement method for the Evans Road High School water line extension. Motion by Mr. Flores.
Consent.
Oh, it's a consent. Oh, I'm sorry. And B, consider and take action regarding approval expenditures equal to or greater than $50,000 related budget amendment. Cool, B. Okay? On A, do I have a motion?
Motion.
I mean, motion on A, second by Mr. Flores, second by Ms. Ayder. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed likewise. B, consider and take action regarding approval expenditure equal to or greater than $50,000 related budget amendment. Motion by Ms. Ayder, second by Mr. Flores. Discussion, Mr. Macias.
Thank you, Mr. Salinas. Thank you, Mr. Ayder, for reminding me about the mic. Also, I did request that a report be sent to us, the environmental quality assessment for Crestview. This is what a particular agenda item contends with. I wasn't too clear on if the remedy, which I believe is to add new carpeting and so forth to Crestview, was also changing out the problem that was annotated in the report with the air conditioning unit. If you could address that a little bit. I guess my concern is, I'm thinking maybe we're just putting a Band-Aid on it.
I'm looking at the environmental...
That's correct, sir. That was a recommendation. That was partial recommendation. We also are going through and cleaning all the air ducts, and we're doing some other in-classroom.
Oh, and it's removing the carpet and putting DCV.
In all of the classrooms and the hallway, that's correct.
That's where we were moving the carpet and putting DCV.
That's correct. That was the $95,000 budget adjustment, 93, whatever.
Yeah, I think it was $91,000, it looks like. So, we're going to change then the AC units, or we're just going to clean them?
No, we're going to clean them through. We're going to bring somebody through, like they do at your home, like Blackman-Mooring, and come do a complete sanitization of the whole.
Is that part of this project?
That's correct.
So within the scope of the $91,000?
No, sir, that's separate. It's another recommendation from the environmentalist on this school.
When will that project, is it going to come to us as RFP, or?
No, we're doing that through maintenance. It's going to be part of the maintenance budget.
Okay, because again, my worry is that obviously if we don't get a chance to do that, we probably will see this problem again.
No, it'll be done over the course of the summer also.
Okay. I think that's all I have for right now.
Just for clarity for me, what are we doing? Because he confused me.
We're removing the old carpet and putting DCV.
Like we did spring metals? And that cost $91,000?
But we're also doing the classrooms at Crestview. Spring metals, we just did the hallways. We're doing hallways and classrooms here.
But Crestview has carpet in the classrooms.
That's correct.
It's only Olympia?
No. Olympia and... There's one other one, I can't think off the top of my head.
But all we're approving is the removal of carpet and replacing the DCV.
That's correct.
Anybody else?
Yeah, I have a follow-up question. I did notice too, the buy board. What does buy board mean in terms of this process?
Buy board, excuse me, is it purchasing, it's a cooperative that the State of Texas offers, so they go out and they solicit different vendors that can provide services to anybody in the State of Texas that joins them, and we are one of the members. And so whenever we're going to do a project, we look to see if we have something that we've issued as a vendor, or if there's an RFP, or if we have one of the other ones like Northeast ISD, or Region 20, or Buy Board DIR, any one of those that have issued an RFP for the type of work we're about to do. And then we get bids from several vendors that are on that particular list, or multiple lists, to see who gives us the best value.
What is the difference between our procurement process and buy board then?
The buy board is one of the procurement processes. It meets one of them, so it's a cooperative. So you can either do it, like I said, if we could either issue an RFP, and say we're going to issue an RFP, and go with that method, or we can go to one of the other methods that are approved, one of the other things that we've joined, and buy board is one of them. And like I said, we just send out the scope of work and get quotes back for the work that's going to be done, and we evaluate the value and determine which one gives us the best value.
Well, I guess when I looked at the assessment, the $91,000, and if we put that out, normally when we have to go through our procurement process, not the buy board, we're given a list of who, I guess, made a bid for this service, and the criteria that was looked at. And so I don't know if we do as a practice jobs of $91,000 or any that we're using just buy board, because that additional information wasn't provided, so I'm not able to review what that process looked like. So when I said buy board, I didn't know what that was. But you tell me that there is a process, will the board get that information to see who bid on it, or? It kind of sounds like it's a different process though.
Sure, they provide us quotes. We have ranges, so if the cost is between a certain amount of dollars and a certain amount of dollars, you have to get two quotes. If it's between this value and this value, you have to get three quotes. And so we, on this particular job, I think there were three quotes. And so we look at those quotes and say, "Okay, what did they propose?" The scope of work is the same, so there are three different vendors bidding or giving us quotes on how much they would charge to do this work, and then we evaluate those. We have not provided you that information, we can, but we haven't provided it here in this particular item. Or really, this is really, you know how you change a board policy here recently?
Yes.
This is as a result of that. Because in the past, this particular item, you had authorized us to go to buy board and just buy things through buy board. So we would get our three quotes, we'd evaluate them administratively, determine who the best value was, issue a PO, and we move on. Y'all wouldn't even see it. Because of that policy change that you did, you're starting to see, you're going to start seeing some of these things that come up, like through some of these mechanisms that we go out and procure things through.
Let me explain why we define something like this. If we go out and start going up here, we only have too much income to give. But we, when we do that, we extend them, and the time they get the work done, we can extend it in school start. So what we're going to do about school start, we're going to get all this stuff done. So it gives us an early start to do this stuff. When it's already built out, we can go and use buy board, and we can get early start and get going, because you look at this, it's going to be here in July before we start with this. Now, they got next to five, six weeks to get all this work done. Move all that carpet, put the tile in, clean the cubs, do all this. Otherwise, it's going to be very difficult to get this done in time.
Well, and I appreciate that. So it sounds like it's a more timely process. We can expedite a construction, or I guess a maintenance job quicker?
Small job, we can do the extra, nice small job.
Okay. I appreciate the documentation that's provided in the board book, so with buy board, or board buy, whatever that thing is called, you probably could provide that information too, so that we can see that there was an equitable process, and it wasn't just one vendor selected. Because I've said it before, I like this to go out to competitive bids, so that we know that there's a fair process in place. So if you could provide that information going forward, that would be helpful. My other reason why I'm even flagging this is I see this more as a maintenance thing, and so we're pulling money from our operations budget to pay for this, and I'm going to ask the question, if this was a facilities improvement type of thing, could this be a type of project we would see in a future bond?
This is an improvement deal? I don't think it's something that you want to be seeing in a bond. I think it's something that you want to go ahead and pay for. This is a small issue that you can do, removing carpet, putting tile in. You don't want to do this, you know, renovation is a construction renovation, a new facility. You want to do this. The, you know, the difference is, we're not paying a lot of interest in things to do this. When you're doing a bond, you're going to pay for this over 30-year period. It's going to triple the price of what it costs to do this if you're paying a bond with the interest rate and all that that accumulates. That's a small project, you want to just pay that off and get that done. You don't want to be putting this on a bond issue. Bond issue is renovation and new buildings. You don't want to put little small projects. We should budget for this every year and do these little small projects like this.
How much do we typically budget for small projects like this annually?
It's in the maintenance and operation budget. How much we put in there for the maintenance operation budget?
Well, it's kind of a miscellaneous catch-all when we have some of these repairs. This one came up because of the environmental quality issue, because we had continued complaints there, and I drew the line and said, "Look, let's do a full environmental assessment this time. Let's not just test for mold like we've done previous times." And that's where this came up. This came up and said, "Look, if you want to get this done once and for all, these are the things you're going to have to do." Argus, the environmental consultant, told us that. So that's why we're hitting you at this time with this deal. He did that in March, I think we got the report in March back, so we've been working on since then getting the quotes and those kind of things.
Well, I certainly appreciate that, and I obviously wouldn't want to go to the bond with a $91,000 project. My intent would be to have a collective group of facilities that need improvement, and we would put four or $5 million on that, so that we can go ahead and take care of those facilities and those issues. I guess the most pressing thing is I'd like to see backup to the buy board next time. It just sounded a little odd.
No problem, we can definitely do that.
Go ahead, ma'am.
For me, it was a little bit different. I immediately recognized this is a result of the change of policy. And just for clarity, having this information, when the community sees this, then the board is aware of what we're doing. You know, yes, we just had new DCV put in because not, you know, you get a call, "Y'all said y'all didn't have any money," or "My kid's computer," and "Y'all just put in all-new flooring, you know, what the heck are y'all doing?" So, thank you for assisting us in being able to be responsive to the community. That was the purpose. And I do realize it's a little extra work, but still, I think it's good. So, thank you.
I'm sorry, Mrs. Salinas, I have one more question. So, just to follow what you said, so you're saying the board would not have received this information had you not requested it be in buy board?
If I had not requested that the board changed the policy, no.
So we wouldn't have seen it at all? It would have just been?
You have to understand buy board, and we want to know if a city, if you're counting, you know, 90% of the school district are members of buy board. And they go out and they use their bid, you know, for that service. Okay? So it gives us, like Dr. Mackey said, an expedited way to get things accomplished, just when you have a time extension, you know, and we're able to do that. And I'm going to refer to admit that sometimes buy board isn't the cheapest. And, you know, it's, but we've eliminated going out for advertising, going out for other expenditures that it costs. But they are reasonable within the service that they're giving. And there are, you know, you can give it to me, but I just don't know what I needed to do.
But one of the things, Mr. Flores, when you talk about the other districts, we talked about buy board and had a real clear presentation several years ago, because some of the vendors were saying they weren't being notified when the district had jobs. And we sent out a massive, you remember, we sent all these notices out to prospective companies saying, "If you want to be listed on our list of possible vendors, you need to do these things." I think it's electronic now, right? And so then the vendors came back that were interested in, and in buy board, they have to go through quote-unquote "buy board" to be listed for their services, right? Did I make a mistake in there?
Well, I mean, they could always be on our list, even if they were not on buy board for our solicitations. But now, when Mr. Ashmore joined the district shortly thereafter, we went to this electronic method to make sure that nobody was left off. Because those lists, sometimes, you know, it's a little difficult to ensure, but electronically, they're in there, they're in the database, they're going to get the notification. And so I'm going to clarify something a minute ago that I said. You would have seen this item only because there is no budget that has been appropriated for this, so you would have seen it as a request for a budget amendment.
Which is my follow-up question, I was concerned about having this expense exceed $50,000. I just thought we would automatically see all expenses that exceed $50,000. So from now on, we will, because of our policy change, to include buy board?
With the exceptions that we put in the policy.
For fuel, right?
Fuel, electricity, water, several child nutrition purchases, there was about five or six exceptions that we put.
I see. Okay. Yeah, that makes sense.
But prior to that, we did not. We had an exception, our policy that said, "As long as they use buy board, they did not have to come to the board for any amount."
And those exceptions are listed on page six, right above this item, within this part of the item. It tells you what those exceptions are, right on the same, on the agenda item.
Page six of our board book? Okay.
It's listed, it's here, on this page, right here. It's on the action sheet.
Okay, anything else? Okay, we have a motion. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed likewise. Motion carries. No, we're finished with you. Here, this is yours. This is yours. $3,000. Okay, consideration, discussion items and report fiscal. I'm going to do item B, Title I funding, we've had it several times, and it's been changed.
Mr. Salinas, I'm going to have to leave. Believe it or not, I do have to go back to work, but I do have a TV in my office, so... But I am going back to the office.
You were supposed to be late.
I know.
Thank you for the extra time. Okay. So Title I funding with Williams. It's Williams. I mean, she wants, oh, we need to have a motion. Oh, it's a discussion, okay. We're not going to people. Oh. Go ahead.
Well, I actually... Well, I had actually asked questions before, and I had asked about Ms. Roddy being here, so if she wanted to talk about, we're basically how the percentages are determined in the district, and the changes that are affecting a lot of campuses. I hadn't had questions about that, but I figure I'd give the administration a chance to talk first about it.
Mr. President, I'd like to hear from the administration, because if I don't hear the presentation, and she asks the question first, then, you know, I'm going to be...
Okay.
Well, I'm here to answer questions. I don't have a formal presentation.
In your packet, you have an executive summary for Title I, and how we went ahead and shared the law with you, and then we talked about how we prioritize the schools in order to determine which schools will go ahead and be serviced through Title I. In it, we also talk about how we prioritize the schools for our district, and because our population right now, our low socioeconomic is at 70%, we went ahead and did that as a cutoff for our school, although if we have any schools above 75%, they will have to be serviced, okay? The schools, okay. Any, according to the law, any school that has low socioeconomic over 75%, we have to service them. We have to provide services for them. For our district, looking at what our low socioeconomic status for the district is, it's 70%, and so that's the cutoff that we have for our district. And so when we prioritize the schools, that was what we used. And so the schools that were affected were Converse, Coronado Village, Ed France, Crestview, and Masters. It's on your executive summary, on the bottom of the second paragraph. And then Judson Middle was affected as well. It's all listed under the second paragraph. So, once we did keep some money upfront, we did ask the principals to give us feedback as to how they wanted that money spent. We had a district advisory committee, and through that, we determined that we were going to provide monies for, or the services for the schools, RTI facilitators, instructional coaches, and academic deans for the middle schools. When we went ahead and made that cut, those schools that were left out, the ones that I just mentioned, will still receive those services. We will be providing those services to state competency education money. Okay? So, in essence, even though we have cut some schools, they will still receive, their services will not be affected.
So we say we had an RTI facilitator...
For those elementary, yes, those schools.
They will still receive...
Yes, ma'am.
An RTI facilitator, just paid from a different set of funds.
A different source, yes, ma'am.
So what is the impact of the title change on our campuses?
It really, well, I'll let Ms. Roddy answer that. Thank you.
The purpose of this funding is to make sure that we are servicing the campuses that have the highest poverty rating. And so what this allows us to do is provide more support to those high-poverty campuses. So, those positions that are sliding off of Title over to state comp ed, now that frees up some money, so what that allows us to do is provide additional FTEs to the Title campuses. So, now in addition to those campuses that are no longer going to be Title, receiving FTEs, excuse me, out of state comp ed, they're also going to receive campus allocations. So they'll have the funding to provide after-school tutoring and some of the other supplemental supports that the kids need.
Go ahead, ma'am.
And... If I don't ask this right, I apologize, because this isn't my item, but I'm just curious. So in a minute, we're going to go into our budget discussion. And Dr. Mackey, help me, if we're still going to give the campuses what they received under Title I, and now we're going to fund it under state comp ed and FTEs, where does this money come from?
Where's the compensation from?
The state comp ed funding, we've had in excess this past year. We don't know what our balance is going to be for this upcoming year. But we have enough to cover these positions.
So it'll roll over for one year?
Yes, ma'am, but you know, that's the case for any position that's funded from soft money. They understand when they go into the position that it's contingent upon availability of their funds.
I believe you mentioned, oh, were you finished? It was mentioned that there was four or five elementary that are going to change from Title I, and they might be funded from comp ed.
Yes, sir.
My concern, or my question, there's some teachers that accepted a job on a Title I school on the basis that they're, and I think they still do it, on the basis that their loans would be paid if they worked on a Title I school. Is that correct?
That's correct.
They still, forgive me?
Forgive us.
Okay. Do they still do that?
Yes.
Okay. Are we going to make sure out of those five campuses? Oh, I'm sorry.
That's an HR question.
No, the question is, have we ensured that out of those five campuses, how many teachers accepted a job on a Title I school on the basis that, "Oh, good, they're going to help me pay my loan"? Have we looked into that?
Yes, sir. Prior to the exit of our teachers this spring, I sent out a communication to all educators in the district that if they are concerned that their loan forgiveness may be impacted, that they need to contact me. I have not received a single contact directly to seek assignments elsewhere. Not, not all of the programs are identical, that they may qualify for loan forgiveness under, so some of them might be there, that they're serving in critical need areas, science and math, or at-risk populations. So there's different programs, but specifically for those with Title I specific loan forgiveness requests, I put out a communication to all of the staff that if, or to teachers, that if they need to contact me to seek an alternative assignment, that we would assist them with that.
Okay. Am I correct that the district has to provide a letter to that employee every year indicating, yes, they were working on a Title I school? How does that work?
Basically, at the time that they go in to request or submit to the government for the loan forgiveness, that's when we, we basically sign an affirmation statement that from these dates to these dates, this employee was employed at a Title I campus. But that would be specific for the Title I. Some of the other ones ask other questions, that they served at-risk population, or that they were serving in science and math, so...
Do they have to report that on a yearly basis to the government?
No, no, sir.
The next question, I believe we said, we have a, if they have at least 70% disadvantage, is that what we said?
Poverty, yes, poverty.
Where do we get? Where do we get seventy percent?
These numbers, they're in your chart, Attachment B.
Who determined the seventy? They said, if you're at least seventy percent, then you qualify. Who determined seventy percent?
It's based on free and reduced lunch forms.
That's not what he's asking, ma'am.
That's not what I'm asking. I understand that. I believe you said, in order to qualify, you have to be at least, the cutoff is seventy percent, I think that's what I heard.
Mm-hmm.
Who determined the cutoff at seventy percent?
Oh, that's determined by the data for the district. So, we look at the total number of students who are free and reduced, we look at those that are identified as economically disadvantaged, and the data determines the number. It's not a person, it's the data.
So, we couldn't say, well, we're gonna change that to sixty-five percent. Is that possible? That in other words, to qualify, we're gonna change it to, instead of seventy, we're gonna change it to sixty-five? Is that possible?
If we have a mass exodus of poverty students, that's possible, but for right now, no. The data is determined by the poverty students that are currently enrolled in our district.
What policy, what policy?
It's, it's, it's not district policy, it's federal. It's federal.
So, the federal government determines that, the percentage?
The federal government determines how we service campuses. The percentage that you're looking at on this chart is determined by the number of students in our district that qualify for free and reduced.
I understand that. I, maybe I'm not.
Let me ask.
Yes.
Is there a formula put out by the federal government that we use to use that data to determine?
Yes.
I have another one, but I'm seeing, I'm having a senior moment, I'm sorry. Oh, go ahead, go ahead.
No, go ahead.
So, last year, what was that determination?
The number last year was sixty-two percent.
So, the number was sixty-two percent, and this is again, just explain this a little bit to me. We have a pot of money that are Title money, right? So, this past academic year, we hit sixty-two percent as that number to fund economically disadvantaged. This year, we decided to make it seventy percent, and this way, I'm saying, you're following the data, but, but we, see, that's where I'm a little bit confused. Explain why we changed it from sixty-two to seventy percent?
We had an influx of high-poverty students into the district. We don't change the data. It's when the students were there.
And when you say influx, you're talking a quantity of students?
Yes.
Okay, so you do the math, and so when we had it at sixty-two percent, how many students were being served?
Last year, I can't answer that, I don't have that in front of me.
Because that's how I would imagine you would make the determination.
Right, right.
So, if you don't know how, I mean, that's a big concern. I wanna know how many we served at sixty-two percent, how many are we going to serve now by moving it to seventy percent?
If I can answer that.
If we had influx, I would imagine we would have similar numbers.
If I can answer that.
Yes.
What we do is we look at the economic status of the district. Last year, when you look at our district, we were at sixty-two point eight, I think. When we compared with other districts, pardon? For free and reduced lunch, we were at sixty-eight. When she said we had an influx of students, low-poverty students coming in, when those students filled out those free and reduced lunch forms, and actually, last year, Dr. Mackey did ask us to make sure that our students completed those forms, because a lot of students were not receiving services, right, with child nutrition. Many of the students were not receiving services, like, for example, testing and all, because they didn't qualify for that. So, once they did that, our poverty level went to seventy percent of students receiving free or reduced lunch. So, that determined the cutoff.
Would it be fair to just make a simple statement and say that as a general rule, not, you know, hold your hand up with your Bible, but as a general rule, our cutoff for Title I is whatever our free and reduced lunch rate is?
That's what it is. That's exactly what it is.
Okay.
Ms. Williams?
I'm sorry, microphone. One thing I was a little confused on, and maybe you have a good explanation for, but a lot of, when you're looking at elementary to middle to high school, it seems like our economically disadvantaged percentages are a lot higher at the elementary levels.
Yes.
Why are all the, you know, for example, Wagner's not, but all of the feeder schools that feed into Wagner are.
Okay, and I'm gonna tell you.
So, I was just curious about that.
I'm gonna tell you that, for the most part, at the elementary campuses, the parents do fill out all of that paperwork. At the middle school, a little bit more. At the high school, the high school students do not want to complete those forms, for the most part, and that is why we have that big discrepancy there. But for the most part, that's what it is. And a lot of, a lot of the times, the parents feel, at the elementary schools, when they receive all the packet of registration information, they fill out everything. At the high school, they're selective, they don't. I know.
When my kids went to elementary, they offered them a free something if they brought that paper back, and I just, I don't give a shit.
Well, this last year, as you can see by the high percentage of students that are, that now qualify for free and reduced, that had a lot to do with it. When the parents came in to register, we provided technology for them to go ahead and start completing their paperwork.
No, go ahead, go, 'cause I'm.
Oh, go ahead, you wanna, you wanna talk first? No, 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 go ahead, I'll explain.
Since there is a formula, and I've been hearing that there is a method in which we make this determination, I always ask, what are the other districts doing? Are they following the same formula, sixty-two percent, I'm sorry, seventy percent now, the new line, that if I were to go to Northeast, Northside, they would do that too?
They used to say formula.
Okay, but.
But their percentages is gonna be different.
So, give me an example, I know you probably don't know, but what would Northeast or Northside say is their economically disadvantaged cutoff? They could drop it.
What's the free and reduced lunch in Northeast, Northside? You should know that. Church Cibolo's about twenty-four, isn't it? I know theirs.
They would use different numbers than Northside, it's about forty, they're about forty-eight or something like that.
Well, I'm, I'm happy to hear that we have some state comp ed money. I mean, my concern is obviously, Converse Elementary is one of the schools that is losing their Title I funding. I have a lot of parents to answer to in the Converse area, that's in my district, and so noticing that the projection was sixty-six percent, it was, I think, for this next year, yeah, there it is, sixty-six percent, that's pretty close to seventy, and that's obviously a projection. I don't know, I'm gonna ask this question too, when you've done projections in the past, is there a plus and minus ratio on that?
Yes, sir, two percent.
Is it two percent? So, we could say, worst case, this Converse may be sixty-eight percent if we go on the plus side on that?
If, if, no, no, seventy minus two percent, we take it down to sixty-eight. So, if Converse were at sixty-eight, they would also be receiving services.
Well, no, it says here, you're projected for 2014, 2015, is sixty-six point five percent.
Sixty-six point one five.
So, I'm assuming there's a plus two either way?
No, no. What we do is we have a two percent leeway, because sometimes there's some mobility within the district, so I would hate to cut off a campus and then some students move in that need those services. So, we would serve down to sixty-eight percent.
That's at the seventy, and she's looking at the seventy percent.
Right.
We can either go up or down.
And I guess, since I won't look silly next board meeting, I have this item on the agenda for action, if I just believe in my heart that we need to set that bar at sixty-six percent, or even sixty-five percent, how appropriate is that? I mean, talk to me a little bit about that.
You would be taking money away from other students, high-poverty schools that need that money, because then, that part of money will have to be divided among more schools that don't need that much money.
Well, I guess, we were at sixty-two percent before, though, that's what's kind of interesting.
You need to see even more kids.
But I still need to see a number. I'd like to see what that seventy percent is servicing in terms of what the sixty-two percent service. If we have more kids, I'd imagine, I'd like to see that impact hit them. I'm afraid the opposite's happening. I'm afraid that there are kids that need that service that aren't going to receive it, and it's going to hurt them.
Well, in terms of Converse, Converse is not losing any FTEs, so those students are still gonna receive services. They're still going to have allocation.
For one year, though, right?
What happens after one year?
That's the same thing for every campus, even Title I. It's yearly, every year, we go through this process, so it's the same.
So, we'll be able to make adjustments, then, if this year, we have a higher rate?
I assure you, I assure you, if these numbers don't pan out come August, I have the opportunity to revisit the application and make an amendment. So, it's not like this is carved in stone and this is it, but this, we have to start someplace.
But it's in August, okay.
Certainly. I guess I would ask, prior to our next board meeting, with this item still being an action item, that we have physical numbers of students that are serviced. That would apprise me to know that we're still serving the greater population of the district, and that I'm not, there are four schools here that were receiving Title money. Granted, I, I do feel that we have the state comp money coming in.
If you look, excuse me, excuse me for interrupting, if you look at Attachment B, you'll see zero-one, the lower number, thirteen thousand two hundred and fifty-one, those are the number of students that are being serviced for the free, and then for the reduced part, it's two thousand nine hundred and ninety-one.
The very bottom. Okay, so, this thirty thousand two hundred and fifty-one.
And the twenty-nine ninety-one, that is what we serviced in 2013, 2014, so this year?
Yes.
Okay, so, total was sixteen thousand two hundred and forty-two students that fell in that area. And I guess we're still trying to piece together what 2014, 2015 looks like with the projection?
No. Well, it all depends. Go ahead.
If we were to use seventy percent, based on knowing what we service now, 'cause you're right, it's right here, sixteen thousand two hundred and forty-two students, what does 2014, 2015 look like, based on these projections?
We can't really give you a specific number for 2014, 2015 until we get the snapshot data, which will happen till October, which is why we're working off a projection, but we'll have a better idea in August when the enrollment numbers start to come in.
Okay, October.
I just wanna make it clear that if I'm Ms. Smith, and I taught kids at Converse Elementary, pull-out tutoring, RTI, all of that, and I was paid out of Title this year, I'm still gonna be Ms. Smith pulling the same, pulling kids next year, I'm just being paid differently. No service is being cut to any kids, we're just changing funding sources based on federal guidelines for distributing Title I funds. We made real sure that we cut back in other areas so the kids would get the same services.
And again, I heard somewhere, I mean, we have a lot of conversations, so you have to understand that happens.
Yes, ma'am.
And one of those conversations was that there was going to be a reduction in force at Converse Elementary as a result of Title money being taken. So, I don't know if that's true or false, but that's what I heard a parent tell me, and so that's what kinda started this conversation as well.
And we can show you that that's not true. We can actually give you the people's names this year and next year.
So, then.
So, no services are being cut.
Zero. That, I do feel a little better by hearing that. I guess we'll look in October and trust that we'll reevaluate the data. The comp ed money addresses the issue, the fact that there will be no reduction for at least a year.
Yes, yes.
But I guess, I guess I'm good, thank you.
Ms. Williams?
Sure, I have a question, but before I forget, well, actually, I'll ask my question first, I guess. What I'm a little confused about is that first you were saying, and by you, I mean both y'all, we're saying that the level that we service our students on is based off of strictly the average for the district of those free and reduced lunch that come in, we get the snapshot in October, but when Jose just asked if we, as a board, just felt, or he felt that sixty-six percent, or sixty, or whatever percentage was what was needed, your response was that that would take money from other students that need it, but it wasn't, no, you can't do that. That's where I'm confused. Is this a mandated calculator, or, you know, or is it, 'cause I understand, if you have a hundred dollars and you split it between four schools, it's very different than a hundred dollars splitting it between six schools. I understand that, but you didn't say you can't do that, you said it would take money, so.
The money, first, must be used for those students that are low socioeconomic, that are labeled as low socioeconomic. We have to provide the services for them. If there's money after that, we can, but right now, we can't just say, we're gonna cut it at sixty-five.
Okay.
And, correct me if I'm wrong, Ms. Roddy.
That's correct.
So, the way I understand it, we don't give the government the money back because we're losing four elementary.
No, 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 no.
What happens then, we have extra money for the ones that are qualified as Title I. Am I, am I reading that correct?
You're correct.
And so, if you're a Kirby, or one of those schools that are very high-poverty, you get a little more money, 'cause your kids are needing it.
Yes.
And that makes sense, and I guess where I'm a little confused is, I completely understand and respect that the more you divide a pot of money, the smaller it gets. I understand that, but we're also in a, in a district that's incredibly economically disadvantaged. It's not, we're not talking about twenty-four percent. We're talking about across the district, and like you said, there is wiggle room, because we do have a lot of mobility, and I understand that, but we also know that we have a lot of kids that aren't turning in forms, and I think our, our numbers would be higher if we had kids turning in forms. So, that's my concern, and where Jose's coming in saying, well, what if we thought it was lower? Is there, with the changes in the percentage, using a calculator, but there's still, is there still a committee that sits down that goes over that? Can, so before, I know Jose has this on the agenda, but can we get information on who the committee has been, and who, you know, who it's been the last several years? Is that something we can get to review? And the other thing I was wanting to get before our next board meeting, and I know it's short notice, but it's on there, is just a list of any district employee, district level employees that were paid with Title I funds or comp ed money in the last three years, or partially paid, 'cause I think, we do that too? I'm sorry, I think that's a Ms. Howard question. So, we do some that are partially funded, where, so if I could get a list in the last three years, 'cause like you said, it's, there is a flux in that, and we are changing, 'cause that is my concern, and I understand it's soft money, but what you're saying is, it sounds like, okay, we're good for next year, but I'm also concerned long-term in how we're looking at that. So, if I could get a list of that for like the last three years to review who's been paid out of comp ed money, who's been paid out.
Ms. Williams, do you would clarify, you only want district level employees, so anybody working in administration or out of the ERC?
I guess I'm a little confused on how many we might have, so that would kinda determine, I think. Yeah, I guess because it's budget time, and just trying to understand, and trying to understand, too, that that is a big percentage change to go from one to another, these are some pretty big changes, and I certainly think that it may be, in part, a lot of it may just be because people are turning in forms, or they're not turning in forms, but it also might be changing populations within our district, and that's kinda what I'm trying to look at, too, and just see long-term, by like the last three years or so, how we're, how we're servicing our kiddos. I think that's most of my questions, 'cause I think a lot of my questions will come from actually seeing that information, so I think I'm, I'm good for right now. Thank you.
Any more on Title I? Okay, Ms. Williams, you had item C, Parent Center Health.
Sure, this just, yes, well, it kept getting bumped, and I just had a question, but it was actually more like Mr. Young's question, technology question, or Mr. Gonzalez's question. Is that okay, Dr. Mackey?
Mr. Gonzalez.
Yes, well, that's why I was asking, I was asking permission first here, blessing. Mr. Gonzalez works, I guess, 'cause Mr. Young was pointing to Mr. Gonzalez. Sure, well, I had just, I had been asked by different parents, and actually, some school employees about something, and for the non-board members, I do use the Parent Center app a lot on my phone, and to check grades, and to check all sorts of things, and it's amazing that I can check library books that they have out, what they ate for lunch, everything, but the one thing that my kids come home with, with paper all the time, and it's carbon copies, is when they visit the nurse, to use an inhaler, to those kind of things, and I had asked about, because in the parent app, a couple, you know, I'm curious if we can eliminate some of the paper trail, because basically, in a nutshell, the teachers have to write a pass on a carbon copy, it goes to the nurse, the nurse has to take care of the child and fill out the form, but then the nurse also fills out that same information on the form into the computer. My question, and I know I've already, before Ms. Adair, I can anticipate your question, is, you know, maybe perhaps like a HIPAA thing, and, and the safety of having medical information out there, and Dr. Mackey's shaking his head, but shot records and other health information are also on there and accessible through, so as discipline, that's a FERPA, there's a lot of personal information that, as far as I understand, is very well safeguarded, right, Mr. Young and Mr. Gonzalez? It's all. Okay, well, that's, oh, go ahead, go ahead.
I represent the parents that don't have an iPhone.
Right, that's not, okay.
That don't have a phone, access Parent Center.
Right.
That don't have the internet.
Yep.
I've had complaints, they're waiting, their child comes home with a knot on the head, they want that paper to tell them.
I do have a.
I don't want that eliminated.
Well, no, I do have a response to that, too, though, 'cause there was a difference between routine things and non-routine things, and if your child gets a bump on a head, trust me, you're not gonna be waiting for a note to come home in a backpack, that's a phone call, but that's what I'm talking about. There, there are certain things, and there are guidelines for. for certain injuries that our child's, or our children receive on campus, are immediate phone calls. And a bump on the head, serious things like that are immediate. But I'm talking about routine things, and we have children that use the nurse facility. If you look at the numbers that these nurses are seeing on a daily basis, and the cost of these forms, and our nurses are doing double the work, and I, I agree, we definitely have to address that, but this was more for discussion, this is something that keeps getting bumped and bumped and bumped, but I've been asking about. No, I, I appreciate, I just, I'm suggesting that we're spending a lot of, we're spending a lot of money, the nurses are doing double the work, and a lot of these things are routine. So, that was my question, is if we're putting, we are, we're putting so much on that app and available, and when I, I can set an alert on my phone or on computer for when my child's grade falls below a certain level, when your child goes to nurse, these are things that technology does help with, and I'm not saying it's a fix-all for everybody, I'm just asking for what's possible. And, but it doesn't eliminate phone calls home, June, it doesn't eliminate some of those emergency or urgent alerts, so...
I would, and we, and we propose to tell you of this district to provide written communication to parents, period, whether it's minor, because then we are saying that all of our parents have technology, and I do not support that. I'm sorry. Until this district is going to buy everybody a piece of technology for every kid and give them internet access, no way.
Well, and that's...
Now, if they want to give it to you extra and still send the paper, that's not going to save any money, that's going to cost the district.
No, oh, no, I disagree, and it, there's other ways, that's what I'm asking for, is to explore other options. The nurse is already putting everything in the computer, and they are working on some campuses on how for the teacher to enter the, the slip into the computer, the nurse continues it. Then the nurse could print it and send it home. These are carbon copies that cost quite a bit, and they run out, and then they don't know what to do. That's why I'm asking, it's not necessarily eliminating all written, I'm just, right, but you can also, it's something you can opt in and out of too, just like you can at the beginning of the year for things. But that's what I was asking, is we're doing, our nurses are doing double the work, and I'm asking for how can we still provide adequate, I don't think I don't want notification as a parent, June, I'm a parent there, I understand, but, um...
But the technology is happening.
Technology is happening, it is, I promise, but is there a way that we can look at preventing them from doing double the work, where they're having to do computer and handwritten, can it all be computer, where they print it out? That's what I was kind of asking for more.
I, I think certainly we can look at, uh, what your request is, but we also have to make sure that when we're, uh, entering the work and who we're showing, uh, the logs to, that we have to ensure that the integrity of the data, that, uh, we don't want so, certain people to see it, because right now, we only have that access devoted to the nurses. Uh, Mr. Young and I have talked about, uh, really what are the specific things that you want to see on there?
Mm-hmm.
And then really have us work with Dr. Mackey to determine what is, uh, really viable, because the carbon copies do help us from a, from a nursing perspective and do protect nurses in the event that there's an investigation that goes on. It also protects our staff as well, so I think we, uh, while we want to put things techno- technology-wise out there for parents to view, we, there are some safeguards that we have to be careful with. Just last week, there was a breach at a healthcare system where those records were, uh, privy to the public, and certainly we don't want to put the district in a situation like that. I also would want to get, uh, some advice from our, uh, district physician as well as legal, because there, it doesn't, it, it doesn't necessarily focus on the realm of HIPAA as much as FERPA, because then we have certain things that, uh, go the route of investigations.
Sure.
And then there, there comes the issue of, uh, the environment that we're, we're producing in the clinic. Is it a safe environment if we know something's going to be posted? So, there are some, there are some drawbacks to making sure, uh, what's on there and what isn't. So, if, if you would like, uh, become more specific in what you think needs to be on there, uh, a sheet of paper is always nice to go home, and a phone call as well.
Right.
Um, and then get with Dr. Mackey, and then we can continue to redo that.
Right, and that's something, I mean, there are, I understand what you're saying, but there are health record stuff available through there right now, so I'm assuming that's safeguarded. And, and, you know, technology, of course, it is always something that's a concern, but, um, but that was, we already do have some health information on...
Sure, but those are only viewed by certain people.
Correct.
That access is only viewed by certain people.
Right.
And if you open that, that portal up to certain things, then we want to be able to ensure that that is limited, because that has other concerns that we've talked about, and I think those are legal concerns, that we don't want access as it is now to be open.
Absolutely.
And, like I said, I think it's, if you'll, if you'll let your request be known specifically,
okay.
A little more specific as to what you would like to see to Dr. Mackey, then we can, you know, drill down as to what we think we can do.
Okay, sounds good, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, that's fine, I'll talk to...
Okay. Item A, fiscal year twenty fifteen budget discussion, and by the way, we will have a budget discussion on Monday. For board members, any of you have any questions, or we're okay now?
Mr. President, um, I'd like to go into closed session, um, on the personnel report.
It's not an agenda item.
I know, but I want to discuss it as part of the budget. I want to discuss the dollars. On the budget report, we have a personnel section where we talk about some positions, some upgrades. Oh, we should do that in open session. It's an open session, you're right. Okay. Can we talk about the personnel portion of the budget discussion?
Well, if it's in the budget, no problem, huh?
I know, we don't, we're not, we're not planning on going to the whole thing, right?
No, no, no.
So, if we can talk a little bit about...
I'm going to say, hopefully we get out of here by...
Not there?
Oh, we need four, nine, but, if we can. Yeah, we're going to be here Monday.
Do you just, like, get ready?
Uh, let me find the page. Do you know page one thousand?
It is on page, it's right here, it's on page, score?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Page nineteen?
Go.
Eighteen, seventeen, twelve?
It's on page eighteen, eighteen.
How far, page seventeen, positions or something of this?
Eighteen.
Is that one you're looking for?
Yes, sir. All right. Unfortunately, um, Ms. Adair, your first on the list.
Um, I, I noticed on page eighteen, we have a request for a CTE specialist, and, I know, that's what I said, sorry, you know. Um, but in parentheses, it said a hundred percent Perking, Perkins.
Right.
And I'm familiar with Perkins, but my other board members may not, so if you could tell us Perkins, and for clarity, um, the reason this is blue is because this is not a part of our budget dollars, our MNO, is that, or not our, yeah, our regular budget. This is an exception, is that right? So, can you just tell us, just, just teeny, teeny, where this money's coming from, what the Perkins dollars is?
It is through the Perkins grant.
I'm on page eighteen, Career and Technology, the first position. Seventeen?
Mine's seventeen versus eighteen.
It, it is coming from the Perkins grant alone, and it's, uh, it'll be, yes, uh-huh.
Seventeen.
Perkins is a grant that we, uh, it's a grant that we received through federal government, depending on the number of students that we have through, uh, KATE services.
Through what?
Uh, for the KATE, KATE program.
The Career and Technology.
The, uh, Career and Technology program.
Is this being based on a projected enrollment for KATE?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, on the next item, um, Dyslexia Specialist, we're requesting an increase of days, which is a minor amount, but in, um, the tight budget we're in, um, if I could get someone to explain why we're asking for those days.
Yes, ma'am, we're testing so many people that we, we, that we're paying her every year supplemental, which is costing us more than to just pay her. We have timelines for testing, so she's having to come in after contract. Um, she's the person over here, test, and she's on a teacher's schedule. So, we've paid her every year actually more than this will cost us.
And have the suppl...
Do you work for less?
She's fine, she, she wants to have a set schedule that makes it easier.
Well, supplementals, supplementals don't count for retirement.
Correct.
They do?
That too.
She gets credit for retirement?
I don't know, I shouldn't answer.
But where's that supplemental money come from?
I really don't.
I don't know about retirement, though.
In the salary budget that we do, there, there's, uh...
There's built-in money for supplementals?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I could, I can, I could support that. Any, any board member have a question there, or go next time?
We can show you the number of increase in dyslexia testing, it's astronomical, astronomical.
We have a fantastic dyslexia program, my son was in it in elementary, and by the time he got to high school, he had no problem and he went to college, so we have a great program. Tell us, thank you for giving us those extra days.
Yes, thank you.
By contract. She was through them anyway. So, the next position we have is the District Coordinator of School Improvement to the Director of Elementary Supervision Additional. Can you explain what that means? I don't know what the additional, I don't...
I, I apologize, it looks like that, uh, the spreadsheet may have cut it off. It is additional days, ten additional days. Currently, the position is two sixteen, and we will be requesting for it to be a two twenty-six.
Oh, okay, so who's the person that's going to give me the justification for the ten days? That would be you.
She asked a question.
Okay. Yes, ma'am, I would be glad to give that. We do our planning in the summer, and everybody who's ever supervised all the principals, they're not on a principal contract, they're on year-round. So, we need her here. That's when we do all of our preparation for training, the principals for the new year, and all of our summer workshops, and...
Close the ten additional days, right?
Yeah, it's just to put her on the same contract as the rest of us that are over here during the summer. But I'm writing up if you'd like, Ms. Adair, I'd be glad to.
Can we have some different things here? We're talking about the coordinator of school improvement.
Ms. Howard said that ours just cut off, and we can't show...
Two things, it will be...
It looks like this is creating a position.
Not for job description?
No, that's a position.
Not in addition, so what we're going, what we're requesting is that the position of districts, uh, I'm sorry, District Coordinator of School Improvement is reallocated as the Director of Elementary Supervision.
So, that's a new position?
It will be a new position.
So, we don't have a job description?
Not yet, you don't have any of these job descriptions yet.
Wait, okay, so, so how do we understand, what are you saying? Because that's why I was just asking that to open, and I see it's...
Yeah, yeah, you said, the District Coordinator of School Improvement will be the director of Elementary Supervision. So, that's changed, that's a change.
It, it, it's, it's not a brand-new position, I mean, we're taking our current position, we're changing the job description on it, and we're changing the title of that current position from the court.
No, that's...
No, that's what we're doing, we have an individual who's in a position, we're requesting that we change her title, and we give her ten more days.
We don't have a job description.
That's correct.
I'm asking for a job description. We haven't approved a job description.
Of which position?
Sir?
Wait, well, let me ask you a question. Do we currently have a District Coordinator of School Improvement? How come we add ten days, we don't have one? We do have one. So, we have the District Coordinator of School Improvement, so this is asking for ten days, and they're asking to change the title of the job. Is that correct now?
What I'm saying, we need that job description.
I think they're adding, they're adding, I mean, I'm assuming they're adding some additional responsibilities for that forty, is it just days?
Yes.
Is that forty-two hundred, so there's additional responsibilities?
Supervision of the Elementary Administration.
So, on Monday, can we have that description, don't we have?
Yes, ma'am, at one time we had this position, so we do have a job description, I held it, so we can pull that.
Um, if, if I may add, it has been our normal practice that anytime we have a position title change, or change in pay, meaning that we're going to either change pay grade, or add days, or reduce days, that's part of the budget approval process, and so that will be presented as, as part of the entire budget.
Yeah, but we think what we're saying, though, is, based on, uh, my understanding from Mr. Salinas, I'm looking to come on Monday night prepared for what I can support and what I cannot support.
We'll have those job descriptions due to...
Monday night will be great, okay. Can I go to the next one, Ms. Salinas?
Uh, yes, ma'am.
Okay, so now, um, I'm at the Secretary of Guidance and Counseling, Advanced Academics and Dyslexia, uh, to two twenty-six, so how many days are we changing for the secretary?
That first, that secretary is currently a secretary for three people. Um, and Director of Guidance and Counseling is always very misleading, he's also homeless, five oh four, at-risk, I mean, it's a huge list.
That's his secretary?
She, that, it's his secretary, it's Ms. Marito's secretary, uh, they share, and she's in charge of a whole litany, so there's one secretary. They're here in the summer, but the secretary isn't. So, we're asking to, that she's here the same time Mr. Cox is.
Okay, and, and the same time as the previous dyslexia person that we're extending those days?
No, they'll still be going out a little sooner, but we, we have people here with no secretary.
Okay, so this secretary for three people, this fifteen hundred is just to give them additional days?
Days so that when she's here with...
To the ten, ten two?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, now, is, is anybody...
We have, oh.
Okay.
You said, we do have a secretary?
We do.
You have created a position?
No, ma'am, we're asking for longer days.
You're only adding extra days?
Yes. Because she actually, yes, sir, because we have these directors here and no secretary. That didn't make no sense. That's exactly correct. Thank you, thank you.
Can I go next?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, Professional Development Eduforia Manager to Professional Development Secretary. Uh, I'd like some justification for changing this from a CT five to a CT six. Tell me why.
Well, right now, she's operating in the capacity of a secretary for all professional development for the whole district. We're paying her as a clerk, because when this was designed like long, ten years ago, I'd have to look, it was a long time ago, we didn't do all this professional development, it was very limited to a certain group, so we don't think, she's not being fairly compensated compared to other people in that, doing the same work.
Now, just remember, we're only going to talk about positions and not people, you're going to get me in trouble. So, um, this, fourteen, no, you said she, and I just wanted to make sure you don't...
Oh, sorry, we're all she's, I mean, poor Mr. Cox back there.
So, um, this is for the year? So this is for the year? This, this amount that you're asking is a total increase over the year?
Yes.
Okay. And the job title change, and we'll have a job description, Ms.?
Yes, ma'am.
Can I go next, or Mr.? All right, I, I hated to see Ms. Gill leave because I had some questions, so you got it, Ms. Vera?
I've got it.
Bless you, my child. Okay, so in special ed, tell me what we're doing, we're adding two new speech pathologists?
Yes.
And how many do we have?
Right now, we have-
How many we got, Ms. Howard?
I'm not exactly sure. Four that I filled, we have some openings, so.
So, so if we had four that were filled, that tells, but how many positions do we already have? So then we're asking to have eight?
Because we're taking away from another area.
Tell me more.
Okay, we're, if we do the speech pathologist, we're going to move the diagnosticians, so that they can go ahead and serve in their place.
Are the people in those jobs qualified to hold that job?
This, no, okay, go ahead, that's HR.
I'm sorry, this is an effort to reduce the use of consultants that we're having to contract in to the district to provide these services. So we're trying to hire more of our own.
Okay, Ms. Salinas got his hands up.
Oh. Are these the positions that we have always advertised, but we never can get them? I don't think I ever see those numbers. Maybe now we might be able to get a different position.
That's correct.
No, no, sir, that's, that's two people, that's not-
That's three people, I'm talking.
Yes, sir, and those are assistants, those are not, those are not triple-C pathologists yet. So there's, there's two requests there. One, the first request is to request two triple-C speech pathologists. Two. Then three assistants to support them.
Well, with that question, for clarity, the job description remains the same, and the pay scale remains the same.
Yes.
Because if you tell me you're going to change the pay scale, then I'm going to expect the people that are already working to be adjusted.
No, this is just to add allocations, ma'am.
Okay, so they're not changing the pay, Ms. Salinas?
Right.
Okay. Next page.
No, oh, yes, next page, because I have one, and next page, thank you.
Change supervising LSSP to the special education coordinator of evaluation. Now you're going to have to really explain that.
This- Because the position already, again, it's another one of those positions that already exists, we are requesting additional days for this position, and also a title change. The rationale to change the title from just a supervising LSSP to an actual coordinator of evaluation, that would give that, that particular position the supervision of both the Diags, or the educational diagnosticians, and the licensed school psychologists.
And we prefer a person with a PhD who has familiarity with that, with those two areas. So that they can- A person, a person with a PhD, so that they can go ahead and supervise and review the reports that these two positions submit.
So we currently have a supervising LSSP that's at a doctoral level?
Not right now, we'd like to change it to one if preferred.
Right, to a little more qualification.
When we change the job description, which you're going to bring us on Monday?
Yes.
What about the position, the budget meeting? What about the person in the position before you change it? What do we do when we change jobs and people are in them and they're not qualified?
Right, so in expectation that we were going to be presenting this to the school board, we did offer the individual that was in the position the opportunity to stay on board with the school district's LSSP, and he has signed and accepted his contract for that.
So we're good to go, yes, okay.
So he'll be, he'll be in the field as opposed to working at district office.
Okay. Can I go next, or Mr. President? Okay.
I do want to interrupt you, you're taking all my, my questions for me. That's good, though, that's good, I can relax.
She's doing great, why do you want me to repeat?
I have another question that you didn't ask.
Oh.
So, my question is that there's two ed diagnosticians, I have some trouble saying that particular word, but they're still sitting, I believe, at pay grade three. I'm requesting a pay grade four for them, and I think that we had had some discussion about those positions last year. It wasn't recommended last year, so everyone else in that area has been upgraded to pay grade four except for those two, so I guess-
Educational diagnosticians, and I'm, I'm glad that you're bringing them up, because to, for a matter of clarification, to my knowledge, they have been presented as part of the budget. Ultimately, Mr. Macias, by the time you receive the budget, it's already gone through seven, at this time, this year, has already gone through seven drafts amongst the administration for, for those items to be vetted as must haves, to, in order for the district to continue to move in the right direction for our students, okay? Over the last four years, we have brought, well, let me, forgive me, over the last three years, we have brought educational diagnosticians for increases every year at their request. Now, here is the situation that we are facing with regard to educational diagnosticians. Their jobs are similar, but not the same to an LSSP. LSSPs are licensed school speech pathologists, they hold certificates and licenses that the educational diagnosticians do not hold. In addition, they have more authority under those licenses to provide the services that educational Diags do, and then some. So what is happening in special education is that there is a trend, not just in education, but in the industry as a whole, to move away from those diagnostic, diagnostician positions because they do not, for lack of better terms, we can get the same services from an LSP, LSSP, in addition to what their licenses are allowing. And so each year, when we come to the, to the table for the budget recommendation process, the Diags have requested to be there. They have been wonderful communicators with my office, asking for us to advocate for them, we do put them on there, we have worked with special education. But ultimately, at the end of those discussions, we have to determine what is best for the district and the students. And if we can spend the same amount of dollars and slightly higher just to get an LSSP that can give us the same services as the Diag, and then some, we prefer the, the LSSPs. And many of the school districts, even here in San Antonio, are phasing the diagnostician positions out, they're becoming obsolete because they are not trained at the same level as LSSPs.
I appreciate that thorough explanation. I hope that one day we can have seven vetted budget meetings, we've been having some difficulty with that this year. But if, if we had that, my goodness, but the thing is, I understand that we've been working towards the retention issue. And so my understanding is that those two positions are the only certified teachers, that they can actually go into the classroom. There's, there's something special in terms of what they do that's unique, and it's also my understanding that there's training that takes place, that they have experience currently. I mean, if we were to get new personnel, obviously, this would be a mute point. So their value in terms of retention is quite high, it's just my opinion, and as a result, I think they probably have earned that. Later on, we'll probably discuss that whole seven to twelve-year pay increase for teachers, librarians, that, that was brought up during some of our email communications, where the, the pay just hasn't been there. And my fear is that we have employees that will, will leave our district that are valuable to us.
And in response to that, Mr. Macias, that is part of the plan of the special education department, is to allow those positions to be phased out through, through their attrition. We would not re-staff those positions if they left the district.
Pay grade three, right, they're pay grade three to pay grade four. Yeah, they just, just put them, put them on par.
If, if you would, I mean, you can't, the, the category of work that they can perform, and the certifications they have, to make them equal to an LSSP is, is not appropriate.
Hmm, okay, I guess I'll look further into it if I have additional questions.
I was going to say, Mr. El, Mr., sorry, Mr. Elton, I'm really looking at Mr. S, Mr., what's his name? Macias, Mr. Mantis. Okay. Okay, so, but I want to be clear on this, would you send us the job description of the diagnostician and the LSSP? And then we can tell the difference on paper, and the licenses requirements are on the, okay. And, well, let me just get to special ed, Mr. Salinas. Okay, so the next one is the licensed specialist in school psychology, are we looking to add a position? It doesn't say part-time.
It's two, two requests.
I'm not at the part-time, I'm on the first one, the seventy-one thousand. Why do we want to add somebody at seventy-one thousand?
This again is because we are contracting these services out. We, we've, we've now got to a place where we have been able to fill our LSSP positions, and the amount of services that are needed out there, we, we feel it would be beneficial to add this position for the district, so give them another allocation.
Okay, and I just want to warn my board members that you cannot leave the room, or we won't have a quorum. Yeah. Yeah, I just want to warn y'all, you cannot. Okay, so, so we really aren't spending any more money, we're just moving it from contractual to budgeted?
Yes, exactly.
Okay. What did you say, Ms. Vera?
And that's what we're trying to do, we're trying to move away from getting all consultants and getting all-
Contract.
To really harm our own people.
Right.
So that we can have a continuation of services for our students.
Okay, so tell me about the three part-time.
Same thing, we're just trying to cut down on the use of consultants and contractors, so we believe that by creating part, the reason that this would also be beneficial is this, if these part-timers choose to also work somewhere else, at the time that they're not with us, then they, they can still, I mean, these are very marketable people.
Sure.
So by creating these part-time positions, it's our hope and intent to, again, continue to, to take away from the contracted services, because we pay double almost, it's almost double what we would just pay an employee to do this work.
My only part of the concern for part-time is where we were just talking about insurance. So will these part-time employees be entitled to full benefits?
It depends, how many hours they work, so we have to determine-
What's the design plan?
I don't know what the design plan is, do you know, is there supposed to be twenty, thirty hours, I have no idea.
It's the intention that these would be twenty-hour individuals.
Okay, so when you bring that back, please, for purposes of our insurance, that we're trying to work on, who we're going to have to cover, find out what the time is that would kick them over, because then our budget's going to be off if we have to pay, pay those benefits. And the last one is special education coordinator. That's yours? Hey, he got that one.
Okay, on the special ed coordinator, how many do we have now?
Four.
So we're at one more, that'd be five.
Yes, sir.
I think at one time I asked, why do we need them all at two sixteen? They were coming in when there's no kids.
Okay.
What are they supervising? Hopefully, we cut down on that, that we don't need them all here, and not only that, but the other-
Not only that, but we got to make sure that they are certified. So I'm going to tell you right now, they used two of them that were not certified, they got, because I got the information, they got certified a year later, but yet they were doing special education coordinators and at two sixteen. I can understand it, how did that happen?
At the same age as the ones that weren't certified?
Yes, yes. The ones that were not certified, the same age as the ones that were certified. I don't know how that got away, but one of these days, if I have to, I'll bring you the information.
Well, she already had it.
Oh, you already have it, I'm sorry, thank you. And this is going to be the last item, we're going to cut it off.
All right, and I'll talk fast. So originally, the special ed coordinator positions were created not requiring a special ed certificate. However, we did want them to hold a teaching certificate, a minimum years of experience in the classroom, and if preferably, an administrator's certificate. The coordinators are in a two sixteen position because their job is to supervise the programs at the campus level. So one coordinator may be assigned multiple campuses, and they are working with the department chair at that campus to make sure that the ARDs are appropriately being conducted, paperwork is being filed, that all the rules are being filed. The coordinators themselves are two sixteen because they're closing out the school year for, so they, they come in a little bit early, and they leave a little bit late before the teachers do, because they're, they're, they're basically opening and closing out all of the year's worth of paperwork and documentation and audits.
They're also doing the staff development for our new teachers.
Yeah, they, they conduct multiple audits, so they are not just classroom positions, these are people that are supervising programs at each campus.
I know that we get money for special ed, but in addition, the district has been putting in a lot of, couple of million dollars for, for, a couple of million perhaps, I don't know. Okay, so maybe that's one area that we need to study within the next year or something, and see how, how we can help with that. Well, oh, okay, well, that's why you're in charge, sir. Okay, anything else, board, don't forget, you're going to be able to make it Wednesday, I mean, the twenty-fifth with the coalition.
I don't know. Because Mr. Flores couldn't tell me where it is, and it's at eight o'clock in the morning.
North Side Activity Center, North Side Activity.
It's the Activity Center, that's not where we went. We went to where they had the work.
It's one of the stadiums.
It's at eight, it's on your calendar.
The superintendent wants to drive into traffic at eight o'clock in the morning to Calabria.
From eight to twelve.
Oh, okay.
Dr. Mackey and Ms. Salinas, I just want to be clear, and I have to agree with Mr. Macias, even though he's not paying any attention. Yeah. We have canceled several budget meetings, and I want to express publicly my displeasure, because I did not receive a phone call, I left the other side of town to get over here to get a call from Mr. Macias, said the budget meeting was canceled. I don't have an iPhone, and I don't live on email, so no one called me, and said, "Ms. Adair, the meeting's canceled." And I know we have a Spurs game, that's where my husband is, but we are running out of time.
No.
Yes, we're running out of time, this budget-
I want to answer what you just said.
Okay.
You, oh, you have never complained about, oh, I didn't get it, you always telling me, oh, yeah, I got this and this, that, you never, you-
I never got a call.
The secretary, don't send me emails, call me.
No, 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 I don't, I'm not saying that, I'm saying that if we cancel a meeting at the last minute.
No, it wasn't canceled at the last minute.
When was it canceled?
About, what, twelve o'clock or one o'clock?
No, I talked to Dr. Mackey and Jackie at lunchtime, and neither one of them expressed to me that the budget meeting was going to be canceled.
It was maybe three, four o'clock.
Three, four o'clock.
Because that one, they were notified about the electricity.
I know, but courtesy, if it's after lunch, I would like a phone call, you have the calls on them, they got iPhones. But I'd like a phone call, and Monday, I'm going to pick right up where I left off, because how can I make an informed decision to support or not support just based on a line? I need you to tell me what you're wanting, why, and what's it going to do for our kids. And I'm sorry, you know, everybody that wants to go home, this is what we're supposed to be doing, this is what the law says board members are responsible for, the budget. All the rest of the stuff, really, Dr. Mackey's responsible for it, curriculum and all that stuff, he is, we're responsible for the money. And this year, since it's my last year, I'm going to ask you the questions, so I can go out with a clear conscience, thank you.
I don't have a problem with you asking the question, man. Wait, I'm not, I'm not debating that. That's good, and we're going to continue this on Monday, okay? This meeting is adjourned, no more questions.